Okay, we're live.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Good morning, everybody. I'll officially call the August 20th 8:00 a.m. Public Safety Special Meeting to order if we could all rise and the chief has the flag as always. Appreciate it, Chief. You can lead us in the pledge.
My allegiance.
Allegiance to flag. America to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation. Under God. Individual liberty with liberty and justice for all.
Can always tell when folks are really, really busy and or have had enough of my public safety meetings. They got three cancellations about 20 minutes ago. I understand there's been a lot going on. You all work very, very hard and I appreciate it. We'll quickly just go through roll call and just do the administrative side. So, Michael Berry.
Michael Berry is here.
Morning, sir. Chief Bolter.
Morning.
Morning, sir. Town manager Maria Capriola.
Morning.
Morning, boss. I believe Kristen is out today, right, Maria?
Correct vacation.
For handling her. Good for her. All right, much deserved. Jennifer is not with us. I don't believe. Okay. Kevin is hopefully enjoying retirement. Update my list. Mark Crits. Mark, I see your smiling face. There you go. Mike Long. I don't see Mike this morning. Melissa Markey.
Morning, everyone.
Hey, good morning, Melissa. Welcome. Mark Massaro.
He's also on vacation.
Yeah, I would be too. Sarah's not able to join us. Chris Peterson.
Good morning, folks.
Hey, good morning. Tom Roy.
Present.
Nikki Cheats is unable to attend. Karen Stewart, I believe, has a staffing conflict. Neil Sullivan.
Yep, good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Neil. I do not see Gary Wilcox's iPad logged in. Melissa Appleby, welcome back.
Thank you. Good morning.
Do we have a representative come contact Comcast because my internet keeps failing? Did you guys hear me again?
Yes.
All right. I was, Melissa, I don't know if you heard me. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good morning. Yeah, I did. I think my internet. I don't know why. Mine's a little off too, but.
Yeah, it just kicks us off. I don't know. Karen, it's always wonderful to see you. Thank you. And we have a special guest, our first selectman, Mr. Wellman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to see you too, sir. All right, gang. We'll, we'll get right to it. We have the wonderfully taken minutes as always that Karen's provided for us. Any questions, updates, amendments to those? Karen, thank you again for standing in there with all these extra meetings and your hard work. Appreciate it very much. All right, those meetings, those minutes will stand. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna get Storm. I say us out of our, out of our, out of our system here. And then we'll go into our regular updates later on. What I would like to do is, is talk about it at a strategic, at a high level. For this group, we can all spend probably the next two hours with our thoughts on ever source response, et cetera. But just to cut to what, what planning on doing is, is that we would have that as a takeaway for Mike, Maria, myself and others to sit down and meet with ever source after we've gathered some, some additional feedback here. And then bring that back to the next meeting to have a discussion on what we can do going forward. Because certainly it would be fun, especially for me to pound away for the next hour. But what's done is done. What's important is that we learn where we could, where we can change our response or we could do things differently and where we need them to plug in and not in any way suggesting we've done anything wrong here. But as always, as I've learned from Kevin and Mike, these, these disasters are always an opportunity to debrief and see what we could do differently or focus on in the future. So if you'll indulge me, I'd like to keep it into that context. But, but Mike, because you were at the helm of this and then Maria, obviously, if you guys could go first on this discussion and then we can all jump in from there.
Maria, I'll defer to you. You can start off and then I'll dovetail into you.
Sure. Thanks, Mike. Good morning, everyone. I'll just provide a quick overview of how the storm response and recovery was handled. Our unified command, which included Chief Baldess and Chief Bolter, myself, Mike Berry, Emergency Management Director and Tom Roy. We were meeting formally at least twice a day, every day, beginning the Wednesday right after the storm. We were also routinely checking in with one another on going throughout the day from very early in the morning to very late at night. But I just wanted to thank all of them for their very hard work during the storm. And also add a big thanks to Kevin Clemmons and the Highway Crew, the Fire District Volunteers, as well as our staff members in the Police Department. Everybody just worked so hard to help get us through a really tough patch. We were also during the storm recovery phase, we were releasing information daily to the public, usually late afternoon, early evening. We thought that that was very important to do very early on in the storm. We were getting a poor response from over source to even get a make safe crew here. We thought it was best to keep the public informed with the best information we had available at the time, even if it was a small amount of information. So again, we shared information about road closures, power outages, services that the town was going to provide. As the recovery period looked as if it was going to be more than just a day or two, we opened up the library program room for folks to come and charge their electronics. Also, it was quite hot at times, so they could use that as a cooling facility. And we're really grateful to the Fire District. They set up potable water stations at all six of their fire stations. All people had to do were bring their containers to fill up. So again, for folks who were without both their wells and electricity for extended period of time, we wanted to do our best to try to help make them a little more comfortable during that really, really tough patch. At the height of our power outages, we had approximately 3,000 people in town that were without power. It was quite disappointing. It took about three to four days just to make safe our neighborhood. And I'll defer to Mike and just a bit to explain a bit more what that meant and why we were so concerned about that. Most power restorations, I would say, occurred between four to six days after the initial outage. So it really took a considerable amount of time. One of the challenges that we had that we will be reviewing with ever source was the lack of communication and coordination from them to us. I want to thank Mike and the others on staff and they were just so persistent, constantly advocating for our residents, our community, expressing our needs. We were constantly evaluating the priorities in terms of, again, making neighborhoods safe and getting critical infrastructure restored with power. We kept sending that information to ever source and I just, again, want to commend them for their efforts with that. The response from ever source, as you all know, we felt was quite lacking and at times unacceptable, particularly when it came to making our neighborhoods safe. So people could, you know, travel in and out of their neighborhood safely as well as getting emergency vehicles in and out of those neighborhoods safely. So that is definitely something we will be addressing. We are going to be holding essentially an operations debrief in the very near future just to review our recovery response and identify any areas we have for improvement. And I think with that overview, I'll turn it over to Mike to add on. Thank you.
Okay, well, I think I hit most of the subject, which is great. Going along with what Maria said, we had information prior to the storm. The region was pumping out information to us with the latest weather forecasts. We were having Zoom meetings and conference calls with the region, with the latest information that we had, with forecasters for the state, along with the National Weather Service. I was online with National Weather Service a couple of days before the storm. We knew what we were expecting. So we, as the town, prepared. I contacted the different agencies or departments within the town, made sure that they were all set. Everybody was all set. So when the storm arrived, Simsbury was ready. We have a very resilient bunch of residents. The residents knew what to do, the departments were ready. And when the storm hit, it hit with force. As I said, we lost about 40% of our town of power, but the town departments were working. The Fire Department handled over 100 calls. They handle about 700 calls a year and I'll let the chief, Chief Baldess go in more into that. But they were ready. They had their crews manned and they handled every single call that came in to them and made that area safe to the best of their abilities. The Police Department handled over 100 calls. And I'll let the chief describe that, you know, what he did with his crews. Just know that all the departments were out. The Highway Department was out doing what they could during the height of the storm. I myself had difficulty getting to where I needed to go because just about every single road into town and out of town was blocked. Working with ever source, I did make contact with them. Prior to the storm, we had a town liaison, which was assigned to us that he was our contact with ever source that we were supposed to use if we had any needs. During the height of the storm, I made contact with them. I told them what we needed. He sent me some new forms, which unfortunately I had never seen before, that they required information from us. I quickly compiled the information along with the Simsbury Fire Dispatch, who was taking the calls. We put everything together. We submitted everything to ever source by 6:00 or 7:00 that evening. They knew what our situation was and they knew what we needed. Unfortunately, it took.
Sorry, I just clarified. 6:00 p.m. that evening, meaning Tuesday, the day of the event, correct?
Tuesday, the 4th, about 6:00 p.m., we had our forms in with the latest information of all of our roads. And there is a significant definition between a closed road, a blocked road and a one lane road. We did clarify that with ever source. I was also on Web E O C notifying the region of our emergencies and what we had. We had major roads that were DOT state roads that were blocked and closed, which we requested DOT support, which we got almost immediately. So DOT was very responsive. When all of our information went into ever source, we asked when we were going to get a make safe crew. A make safe crew just goes and works with our town highway to identify what wires are live and what wires are dead. At the point where we know that the wires are not live, our crews can move trees aside and detangle them from wires to make sure that roads can get open. Now, again, all of our residents are very resilient and most people had generators. So when the power went out, the generators kicked on. So we knew we had some time before things got, you know, kind of hairy. In the days afterwards, we continued to notify ever source of our situation. We notified them of our closed roads and our blocked roads. Now, a blocked road can, to them, means that it is a blocked road with no other way around to the area. So if it's a cul-de-sac or a subdivision of houses, if the only road in and out is block, is inaccessible, that is considered a blocked road and that is a priority for them. A closed road means that there's a tree down blocking something, but there's another way to get around it. They were only concerned with blocked roads at the time, which meant that we only had a couple of those. Now, we put those as priorities, but we also put our state roads as priorities. We need to get them open. But because state roads were blocked, were closed, but not blocked, they did not consider them a priority, which, again, we had problems with ever source with defining what Simsbury's priorities were compared to what their priorities were.
And Mike, to clarify that, so that means that to, to, to ever source, the tree down at, at Health Tracks with substantial infrastructure damage was not considered a priority.
Correct. That was a closed road and not a blocked road.
Right. So when we all, I were. I'll put it in pictures. That, that mean, and Route 10, just to pile on a little bit, was closed until Thursday, I believe, if not Friday.
Yep.
Before, and again, we can get into that later. But so again, a major access point for ambulance, fire, police, mutual aid, et cetera, was closed.
Correct. But because we had a detour around it, they considered it not a priority, even though.
The detour is, is through the office park, through the other detour, past where the Whole Foods is being built, right? So.
Correct.
Yeah.
Now, we understand that there was significant damage throughout the state. However, the request we were making was for at least one make safe crew. I recorded multiple calls. Correct. And that was at least what I wanted, but I needed to have one. Our town highway was chomping at the bit to get out and start opening up roads that we knew were priorities to us. And we couldn't get one make safe crew to take care of that. It took 40 hours to get the first make safe crew. So the first make safe crew arrived on Thursday morning. At that point, they met up with our town highway. We had our priority list of what we needed them to do and we, we directed them around town to the highest priority areas to get open. Unfortunately, due to time constraints, that crew can only stay with us until a certain time that night, which they were relieved and they went back to their, their quarters. We requested and demanded a replacement crew to continue working through the night and we were denied. The next morning, we asked again and pleaded for more make safe crews to come in. We were allotted another one crew with a possibility of another one coming in. So again, once they met up with our town highway, our town highway worked very well with them and made significant progress getting roads and subdivisions opened up. But again, it took, like Maria said, several days for them to get roads opened up so that we could get things, you know, so that people could get access. We knew that people had generators and they had food. However, they could not get out to get fuel to replenish the generators. And once their food started running down, we did have power on Route 10. We could not get them out to get to the stores to get food. So we knew that the situation was starting to get hairy for the residents.
Mike, if I could just jump in with the, when, so if you look back on Tuesday, you know, when the storm ended, early evening, we had, we had those neighborhoods that were completely shut down. They had the blocked roads, which following the 2011 storm event had been deemed to be the highest priority for ever source, the highest priority for just about every community agreed. When you have residents that if something happens, they have a medical issue, they can't get medical services, they can't get fire services, they can't get police services. So I think Farmstead Lane was the good example where, again, 27 homes were shut off due to that very large tree across the road. The challenge that we've seen through all of these big storms is, at a certain point, the residents will take it upon themselves and take enormous risks, risks that they probably don't appreciate. And they begin to start to clear a path to get themselves under those large trees. When we were working with the make safe crew, we had several instances where downed trees were entangled with live power lines. And that was on Thursday and Friday. So the neighborhood may not have had power, but those lines that were going on the road underneath those trees were still live. And that's where I think the danger of these blocked roads gets overlooked, where somebody says, oh, well, we were able to drive, you know, under the tree, across the wires. And I don't think people realize the risks they were taking.
No, that's a very good point. And we even had that situation in the north end of town where we had a vehicle entwined in wires and the resident took it upon themselves to extricate the vehicle out of there. And we found out those wires were live too. So it's a very serious situation that we, we request that residents do not go near any wires that are down until we can verify, you know, what the situation is with them.
Can I just, I'm sorry, I just want to jump in. I want to add additional color to that. So just so folks at home understand what that all means. That means that if there's a 911 call for that Farmstead Road or for Lincoln Lane or those other areas, it means the Police Department has to park away from the wires, right? They have to trek in through the woods or through another way to access the situation, which adds time. The ambulance folks, the fire apparatus simply cannot get their, their assets in. So if there was a medical emergency, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the police would have to backboard the individual out through the woods or whatever, adding risk to themselves and the individual that's hurt. And that's why these are considered such a priority. And thankfully, that didn't happen. But we, we never want to have any of our residents in the town or the state in a position where that's, that's the vulnerability, right?
Correct. We did make contact with the Fire Department, the police and the ambulance to have a scaled down system of if a full-size fire truck couldn't go through, would a, would a cruiser be able to go through or a EMS fly car to go through with medical equipment or fire equipment or whatever needed to go to? If that didn't work, we had ATVs that could be set up to drive through the woods and drive through backyards to get to it. So through Unified Command and through the cooperation of all the departments, we had a tiered system where we would get to residents one way or another, even if we had to walk our way in. But we identified our serious areas and we were prepared for that.
And I, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure the folks at home know that we're not talking about running air conditioners and refrigerators here when we're talking about these priorities. We're talking about if, if someone has a heart attack and we need to get to you, you guys need to get to them. How fast can we respond and are we putting our own, our own folks at risk in that response? So this is a, this is substantial life and safety issue, not a convenience for we need our lights back on issue.
Correct. And what, that was what I was stressing with ever source and pleading and yelling and screaming and doing everything I could with them, was that we were going on days with running the risk of having a medical emergency or a fire or something in an area where we could not access. And they just were not responsive to what we asked. It's, it's just that simple.
No, and I agree with you. Can you give me just, so for context, the plus 40, we, when did we start the clock on Tuesday? Basically, 6 o'clock-ish when we.
About 4 o'clock is when the, the height of the storm hit and everything started coming down.
Yeah. Okay. And we had responded, as you said, by about 5:36. We had gotten our, our information into ever source. So just from a contextual standpoint, 40 hours from that point is what we're talking about here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. So over the time, as I say, we, when we were having our frustrations with ever source, we were in contact with regional sources who were trying to help us out to get what we needed. So we had, it wasn't like we were completely on our own. However, we were under the mercy of what ever source could do for us. So that was the major issue about getting access and then once we had access, then getting people restored. Another crux of that was that once ever source did start coming around, they started identifying poles that were snapped that did not belong to them and they refused to repair. So then we had to go to our next tier, which was Frontier and Comcast and try to get their services out. So much who owned the poles and it's not really our responsibility to figure out who exactly who owns the pole. But because of ever sources troubles during the whole storm, that just delayed some people even further, which, you know, made things even worse. So, but just know that our unified command worked, our emergency operations plans worked. The town was ready and the town was prepared the entire storm. So are there little things that can be corrected on our end? Yes, and we will be identifying those. However, the major crux of this problem was we were relying on outside sources, which we had no control over. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Sean, this is Jim Baldess. If I could just chime in a minute here as well. One of the other things too, that we also had to deal with was ever source provides emergency services with, with special phone numbers that we use to actually contact them for emergency services when we have lines down, holes down, you know, things of that nature. We have telephone lines that are specific to, to our needs, emergency service needs. These are not publicly broadcasted numbers. They're not available to the public. That system completely failed. We were not able to get through using that system. The, the phones either were busy or we were getting disconnected in the middle of calls. So we were not able to use the reporting system that they have in place for us to get information as these lines were coming down and as, as the emergencies were being reported to us through the PD, because we were being the conduit for all the communications to ever source. Thankfully, through Mike as, as emergency manager and his connection with our liaison, that was truly the only connection that we had for quite a long time with ever source. And, and unfortunately, the individual liaison is not necessarily prepared in emergency management skills per se, I think, to really handle that kind of situation. So there was a huge, huge disconnect in terms of communication and breakdown as far as the, our ability to communicate as we should be able to during these emergencies with ever source. They, like I said, they had an absolute breakdown of their system, which also hampered the communication that we were trying to, to provide them.
Absolutely. And just to, to further put a point on that, Mike, Maria, it's my understanding that our liaison was somebody from the legal department at ever source?
That is correct.
So just, just to be clear, we don't, we don't have access to our normal liaison when there's an event. They basically assign us someone else from the company. And again, to put a finer point on, on Chief Baldess is, this individual is not necessarily, this is not their job to deal with, with disaster in, in the middle of it. So it, it's challenging from that standpoint as well, correct?
Apparently, this gentleman has worked with the town before. So this was my first experience working with him and I sure got the legal part about him, him during our phone calls. I was asking for facts and direct communication and try to make our phone calls with 30 seconds to a minute with, this is what I need, this is what you're going to provide. And I was getting, they tried to give me statistics of what was happening in the rest of the state. You know, he said I had to understand the situation, that I had to be, I had to be patient. And that's not what I wanted to hear. So it was a frustrating, it's a frustrating aspect of it.
Yeah. And just again, to put a point on it, we weren't asking for the lights to be turned on. We were asking to make sure that our residents and our, our officers and Fire Department and ambulance folks in Public Works were not in harm's way. We understand that we make safe first and that applies to the whole state and then we go on to recovery. And that's, that's been our standard. Again, this is my fourth disaster here. The other three, we'll call it two times, you know, 2011, we all learned a lot, right? But the other two times, that was, that was how it went. And, and Tom, if you could just refresh my memory, typically in the past, when we know a major event or even a, a, a good sized event is coming, ever source has stationed the make safe crew with us at Public Works. Have they not, down with your folks?
Yeah, that's true. If you look back to like, you know, the lessons learned from 2011. So in 2012, when we were getting super storm sandy, we had a ever source crew at our garage, sitting in our lunchroom, waiting for, for us to tell them where we needed to go. So yeah, again, very different level. And the other thing just to highlight is the make safe crew was not one of these small armies of 15 trucks that you saw when we were looking at the restoration. The make safe crew was one ever source qualified lineman who was absolutely excellent and two Aspland Tree Crew people. That's it. And we teamed them up with Public Works. And, and that's all it took. It took somebody to tell us that the wires were safe and that we could then start removing the trees.
Yeah. And I, I witnessed your work with my own two eyes on both David and, and Lincoln. I mean, it's, you know, this impacted all of us. But again, the moment, the moment the ever source folks and the tree crew shows up, it, it's a beautiful thing to watch. So I want to emphasize here too, the boots on the ground did an outstanding job. It was acquiring the resources. Right? That's, that's where clearly, I think we're seeing a failure here during this response from the ever source side.
No, I, I think you make a great point and I certainly echo it that again, the local ever source employees that come out in the field during these events know what they're doing. They're smart. And they're, they're the key to keeping us all safe and they're not responsible for some of these other mishaps.
Yeah. And I, it's, it's easy to say ever source and to lump folks in. And I want to be clear here that, yeah, the, the folks that are keeping everybody safe, again, not, our frustration is not directed at them.
Sean, if I could also just.
Okay, Chief.
Chief, go ahead.
If I could just underscore one more thing, I know it's been said and I don't want to continue to repeat the issue. But, you know, we, we talk about the blocked roads in the neighborhoods that were inaccessible and, and obviously those are very, very important and very key. But we also need to understand that, that even those roads that have the tree across them that block the normal route for an individual sometimes becomes that, that, that point of focus and they take matters into their own hands. And Tom mentioned this, to where even though they may have a different way, they don't want to. Or they don't understand, you know, they, it's too far out of the way, whatever. And they will oftentimes take matters in their own hands, take their chainsaws from their, their sheds and, and start doing things that, that they can't do. I think we dodged a huge bullet here. The fact that we did not have an injury, we did not have, you know, even worse with the extent of the damage that occurred here in town and the amount of self extrications, if you will, that, that people were doing just to get their roots back in order. And that's, I think, a huge, huge issue that we have to continue to focus on as far as trying to keep our public safe and really underscore the fact that, that there was a lot of danger out there that people, I don't think quite understood, that was truly there. And even for children going, you know, there's a lot of activity in neighborhoods, people outdoors now with, with COVID. We get it. It's great to see, but there was, there was a tremendous amount of danger on the streets during those four days.
Hundred percent. Yeah. And, and again, including the next morning when trees continued to fall despite the blue skies. I don't think folks appreciated, you know, we lost a, we lost a number of substantial trees in town after the storm was over. And, and we very well may continue to as, as a result of damage. So. Yeah, the, these events are, these events are, are, are very scary. And, and, and again, not everybody outside of this group appreciates them. Um, go ahead, Mike, you were going to say something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to make a comment about the public. Maria said that we had, you know, information that we were pumping out from the town to the residents. And the social media aspect of it, they were, the residents were totally appreciative of the information they were getting. Any information that they could get about timeframes or whatever was truly appreciated. We did continue to pump out information about don't be hostile to the work crews that were coming out. Many, many people reported that they had food prepared for them, drinks prepared for them. They were, you know, welcoming them there with open arms and that's what we wanted to see. And, and I just wanted to thank the residents for their patience during this whole thing and for the ones that. and for the ones that cooperated and and worked with us to get this through this. We really show that we are a great town, and the people here know what they're doing, and they're and they're well prepared. So I just wanted to thank everybody for that.
It's a great point, Mike. Chief Bolter, anything you wanted to add from the police side?
Yes, thank you. I just would like to echo all the concerns that everybody have has brought forward and look forward to the debrief, but also echo all the positive aspects of this, in particular, all the departments in the town working, you know, consistently year after year to prepare for these events. And then when they do happen, the professionalism and the collaboration is unbelievable. You know, we had four or five extra officers working. We had three people in dispatch during those hours. And I happened to be out for about three hours and was able to see like the public works crews, you know, floating around, taking care of things. When they could take, you know, open up roads, they were doing that. Otherwise, they were blocking roads and they were making things safe. And then just just a special sort of praise to the volunteers of the fire department. Because, you know, when I was out there, they were everywhere. I mean, they were just, they were floating around, blocking roads, putting up tape, making contact with with residents that, you know, we would not have been able to do alone. And we would not have been able to do without the public work. So just a real special, you know, praise and thank you to the volunteers for that. I think that's probably about it. I don't want to, you know, beat this up too much right now. I'm just waiting for the the debrief. That'll be, that'll be very interesting, and I think we'll, we'll, you know, move in a positive direction from there with with the utilities outside of outside of our town department.
Yeah, I appreciate you. Thank you for those comments. Mark or Neil, anything from from the school side to add at this point to this discussion? It's okay if not. And then just to make sure I ask everybody, Melissa, Melissa, hell, even Karen, you got anyone else have anything to add from the frustration of the response side?
Sean, one, one, one last thing, if I can. I don't mean to interrupt. Because we do have a public audience here, hopefully, that that's watching, and that is the fact of use of generators. We did have some instances in town where we did have some carbon monoxide issues where generators are being inappropriately run inside garages. And so we have to really, again, remind the public that that you're going to use a generator, make sure it's outside, well ventilated, and certainly maintain appropriately.
Yeah, that that's a great reminder, Chief. Yeah, you you don't run your car in a closed garage. Please don't run your generator in a closed garage. You know, some some basic common sense really needs to be applied. And I know it's scary and it's, we're not all used to this stuff, but, you know, there are some pretty simple guidelines. We're twenty feet away from the house, the generator exhaust is vented away from the facility. You know, a lot of people tented their generators. That's great. Make sure that there's adequate ventilation, et cetera. You know, obviously not pouring gas into a live generator. You know, there there's the basics here that we just don't do with our lawn mowers, we don't do normally, and we certainly shouldn't do with a piece of equipment we don't use on a regular basis. And then obviously, making sure that when we're hooking that generator up, we're doing appropriately and and making sure we know what we're doing inside with our with our power as well. So but I'm glad, I'm glad nobody was hurt, and I'm glad we had no, no substantial incidents there. So this is, this is my suggestion, and I cannot take credit for it. Maria and I spoke, and obviously, with with the great guidance we always get from her, is that we would, we would do that debrief with a smaller group with with the Eversource representatives and not, not poor Mark, who was on vacation. I want to emphasize that, that when when Mark comes back, let's, 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 let's not drag him through the through the muck here. The guy, he he's, he's been a good partner of ours, and we need him to continue to be. But there is a substantial and serious conversation that we need to have here with Eversource. So the suggestion is, is that we, we we bring in some additional folks from Eversource who who have the accountability and the answers that we're looking for and and hear us out. And I, and I know they're going to be hearing from a lot of communities. But again, this is not a complaint session. This is a legitimate life and safety concern that we have, and there are changes that need to get made. Heaven forbid this happen again. So Maria and Mike, I'm going to look for you guys to coordinate that and bring in the appropriate parties that need to be. Does that sound good from an action item standpoint for for everyone else?
Yep, and it's already started and it works.
Yep, and I I assumed as much. And again, I'll just, I'll say it one more time. Thank you to all of you and your teams. Again, nothing but impressed. When my four year old looks out at five forty-two, and yes, I did look at the time, I always do when I see town assets going around. The public works, that that big funny looking truck that that drives around was out at five forty-two on David Drive and had clearly already been out as as folks articulated. And I know the fire department, police department, public works, everybody out there. So, you know, the moment, the the moment it you all deem it to be safe enough for our people to get out there, they are out there. And, you know, as as just a resident like everyone else, I certainly makes me feel better to see that every time something happens in this town and and despite the challenges with the outside agencies, we're, we're in pretty damn good shape from what we can control around here. So thank you, guys. All right. We got this Corona thing going on still, unfortunately. So let's do a, let's run through from that standpoint and any other updates. Melissa, you want to go first?
Sure. Hi. So yeah, obviously, we're still in a pandemic. There's still a ton of work that's being done from the health department side of the house. We're obviously still knee deep in contact tracing, you know, monitoring both cases, active cases, as well as their contacts. You know, dealing with any potential clusters that may pop up and, you know, working with our other local health departments to share, you know, contacts, because not everybody lives, you know, within our jurisdiction, and that needs to be monitored. So we're obviously still doing all of that. You know, the the storm definitely had a bit of an impact on our ability to continue our COVID response. Our office was without power from basically Tuesday afternoon right through, I guess, I think it was about Friday morning. I wasn't in the office Friday, but, you know, and certainly, our office is in Canton, as you guys know. So we had, I reached out to our emergency management director in Canton to see if they could make us a priority through Eversource so that we can continue particularly contact tracing. All of our systems are web based through DPH, so I mean, that's how we receive notification of new contacts or cases. And so we need to be able to have internet access and power to obtain that information. And fortunately, a couple of our staff members live in a town that was not severely impacted by the storm, and they did have power and internet. So they were able to do that from home, but it did slow things down a bit. So we're working with Kevin Whitkos on that. So I I believe the our the Canton MD is going to be having some conversations about that. But in terms of, you know, additional or ongoing response activities, we are in the middle of planning a couple of drives through flu clinics this year. So normally, FEHD does not provide flu vaccinations. We just don't have adequate nursing staff to do that. So aside from me, there's nobody else in the office that can administer vaccines, and that's not my primary job. So I'm more on the emergency preparedness side, not clinical. And so we're going to be collaborating with the Farmington Valley VNA to have their nurses be our vaccinators. So because of the pandemic, you know, we have to rethink what the sort of normal clinics might look like. So instead of having, you know, potentially, you know, a couple hundred people coming to a physical location all at once, or, you know, in a close, short time period, we need to make sure that there's adequate social distancing, that everybody has their masks. And so how do we do that? So as I said, we're looking in, trying to basically test out some drive through opportunities. This is a relatively new concept for us. We've, we've never done them before. So it's, it's been around for a long time, but typically, it's best utilized in rural, either rural areas where there's not going to, the the amount of traffic isn't going to impede local roads and businesses. And, you know, it requires a lot more staff and logistical needs, and as well as it's a big safety concern. Anytime you get people and cars together co-mingling, it's, you know, you gotta be careful. So we're, we're working through this. So the two locations that we're going to do is at the Avon DPW location on September twenty-sixth, I believe. No, sorry, September thirtieth. And then we're going to host one in Simsbury, also at the Weetag Fire Station on October seventh. So both of them are Wednesdays in the afternoon from one to five, open to all of our residents in all of our town towns. We are capping it at two hundred people for each location, again, because we haven't done this before. We want to make sure that we can do it in a safe and efficient manner, both from the COVID side, but also from our own safety needs and concerns. And then, you know, we'll reassess after this to see how well is it working? Can we continue to man that type of a response? As I said, it's, it's going to take about twelve nurses to actually help provide the vaccination. And so the the concept that we're using is we wanted to be able to find locations that basically offer protection from the weather in case it's becoming, you know, cold, either it should be like extreme heat, or it could be snowing. We just don't know. September is kind of a goofy month. And so we wanted to provide protection. So we're looking for true drive through facilities. So the DPW and the firehouse offered those opportunities for us. So we're, we're looking forward to this good collaboration. I saw Nancy's email earlier, basically indicating the same. So I've reached out to our both towns libraries and senior centers. So we are requiring pre-registration for these events. We're not going to allow people to just kind of drive up or like, you know, a walk in type of a a person. So they have to be pre-registered. And there's also a online form, the medical questionnaire form, that everybody has to fill out when you're getting a flu shot. This one just happens to be online, so we're requiring that they go online and print those forms and bring them with us or bring them with them. And so we recognize that not everybody either has a computer and a printer or has access to them. So we're going to work with, like I said, library and senior services to assist those residents that might need some additional technical help with that. So we're going to push out some press release information soon to the towns. And then the links to those pre-registration sites will be on our website. So if anybody in town, you know, is calling Town Hall, asking questions, please direct them to the health department or the VNA. And they'll, we'll have links on both locations so that they can easily access. And like I said, we'll, we'll reevaluate, see how well this worked, and then go move forward with additional planning in terms of the COVID vaccine. That's still obviously in the works. It's taking certainly a fair amount of time to research and make sure that they've got an appropriate vaccine that provides not only a save and efficient and effective vaccine, but also one that will provide long enough immunity basically throughout the, hopefully, the year. And so we're, there, you know, lots of different developers and manufacturers are working on that process. As I understand, the federal hope is that they'll have a vaccine candidate fully ready and having gone through all of the the different phase to trials and ready for administration by November, which seems a little bit fast. That's part of their Operation Warp Speed program. So the CDC is collaborating and working with all the states basically developing COVID response plans specific to vaccine administration. What does that look like? So, you know, from a local standpoint, every health department has these mass vaccination plans. It's something we've been planning for very, for a very long time. But again, with the unique challenge that everybody has to be socially distant, maintain that six feet, you know, really be careful, you know, because there is some asymptomatic spread that that we know can occur with COVID. We want to be extra cautious. And so the administration clinics, again, are probably going to look different than we've historically planned for a true mass vaccination, where we basically bring in our entire population to us in very short time periods. So it's going to look probably more like much smaller targeted, location specific clinics. We'll probably do more drive through clinics. Again, we're using these, the flu ones to test our our plans out to see, you know, what works. And then we'll move from there. So it's going to certainly require a lot of patience and assistance from, you know, our other town departments to to help us out with, you know, whether it's just public education, communication, information sharing, or, you know, potentially personnel to help support some of these clinics. So certainly more information to come as the vaccine continues development. I would expect, though, once the vaccine is ready, the way that they're discussing it currently is that it's going to, and again, it's going to come in smaller amounts initially. So, you know, I think they were initially thinking maybe having thirty million doses come, you know, the end of the year. That's going to be geared towards a very specific target group. And so CDC is working on who are those target groups, who are the most critical needs right now? Is it healthcare workers? Is it public health staff so they can vaccinate the rest? Is it long term care? You know, so they're, they're working on developing or identifying those target priorities. And currently, our job is to basically assess the total numbers of our critical infrastructure staff, how many staff and patients are in long term care facilities, you know? So we're doing some of that work along with our, with Regency. This will be a regional kind of project that gets fed up to the state. So a lot of work happening, a lot of planning. But yeah, so there's, there's going to be, I think it'll look a little maybe reminiscent of H one N one. If you guys remember back when how vaccine initially came out, you know, it was in small batches and, you know, the public, everybody wanted it. There was a high demand for it initially. You know, health departments were getting, you know, angry phone calls from residents saying, oh, I have asthma or I have cancer, I have to have it, but there weren't in the initial target group. I expect that to happen again. And that's where we're going to certainly need our our town support to help, you know, allay some of those concerns and fears and, you know, indicate everybody will have the opportunity to get it. It just has to be given in in order based on the feds, not our decision. So.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Any questions?
Lot going on, Melissa. Thank you. My only non-value add is you should call it the 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 Drive Stick and Go event is what I think you ought to name these. But that's not quite as good as Project Warp Speed. But at any rate, all right. Any questions for Melissa? All right. Maria, town manager, and just so you know, Maria or Eric, I'm going to need you to take over at nine as I got to go do that thing I get paid for.
Got it. No problem. All right. Good morning again. So in regards to our coronavirus response, I just want to remind folks that we do have two additional COVID testing dates that are coming up here in town. So this is our third, third, third event, and it will be on August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. This time, the location has changed from the Simsbury High School parking lot to the Upper Parking Lot at the Simsbury Public Library, right here on Hot Meadow Street. Folks still need to pre-register. We do have that registration link on the town's website, and we had also posted it on our social media accounts. So again, I want to encourage folks to take advantage of that opportunity. Something that we are now gearing up for is the absentee ballot process for the general election in November. You know, fortunately, folks can choose to vote by absentee due to the pandemic. But that has shifted a tremendous amount of responsibility to our town clerk's offices. What a lot of folks may not know is that under Connecticut general statutes, it's actually our town clerks and town staff who are responsible for absentee balloting. So in a normal, normal presidential election, the town clerk's office here in Simsbury will typically process about fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred absentee ballots. We are estimating that it is very possible we will be processing in excess of ten thousand absentee ballots this election. So again, tremendous increase in workload, cost, and just resources needed to make that happen. But of course, you know, fair and open elections are such an important foundation of our democracy that we will be doing everything in our power to support the absentee balloting process and make sure that that goes very, very smoothly. So we're getting a lot of questions about the absentee ballots. They are. They are expected, the applications to be mailed mid to late September. Absentee ballots will not be available to the public until about October 2nd. And for folks who are concerned about any delays with the postal service, we do have a secure ballot box that is located at Town Hall in front of our main entrance. So I wanted to make sure people were aware of that. And we have been getting a small number of questions about when our town meetings may be held essentially in person, again, when we might stop doing meetings virtually. And at this point for our town meetings, it's just until further notice. We are, you know, challenged with our Freedom of Information laws and some of our current guidelines and executive orders due to the pandemic. They don't necessarily drive nicely with one another. So for example, you know, a challenge we have is that indoor gathering sizes are generally limited to about 25 people, who are of course also socially distanced at head rub. But under the Freedom of Information laws, if we are meeting time being, we are definitely going to continue holding our meetings virtually. A couple of notes, though, I do wanna to make sure that people are aware. We definitely welcome public comments still. Folks can email that to our town clerk. And we will read those comments aloud during our public meetings. Interestingly enough, we've actually seen increased participation in our public hearings while being held virtually because folks can email comments in advance. Oftentimes, they might not be available on the specific day at the specific, specific time of a public hearing. So for folks to be able to email a statement at their convenience, we've actually seen a pretty significant increase in participation. And also for our meeting attendance, it's much easier for members and we have not been struggling with quorums. So there have been a few upsides to our, our virtual platform. But if the one that does change, we'll be sure to notify the public about that. I do also want to let folks know, we've gotten, again, a small number of questions about, you know, our public buildings are closed, is staff working? And yes, our staff is reporting to duty. So right now, we are accepting appointments with people. I will share that the requests for appointments have been relatively sparse, but our departments are meeting with folks in person when it's needed. We'll often try and accommodate the appointment outside if possible. That may not always be possible. So a good for example is that our library, while the building is currently closed for people to come in and peruse the stacks, we are accepting appointments for people who may need access to, for example, a public computer, the internet, a scanner, a printer. There is a process for folks to be able to physically come into the building to access those services. So again, we are operating, we're fully operational. Our staff, whose primary work location is an indoor location, just again, for the safety of our staff, we are rotating staff members in. So those staff members are doing a combination of working remotely and working physically on-site. But when our buildings are open for normal hours of operation, and at this point, we always have staff members in the building and, and readily available to help our patrons and our residents. And at this point, most of our park and recreation facilities are now fully open, but with some modifications. The transfer station is open with full services except for the swamp truck at this time. And me and I have mentioned previously, but the library, again, while not, I'm currently allowing people in to peruse the stacks, are providing a curbside service that has worked out really well. We're typically processing over 40 pickups daily and have as many as 300 outgoing materials daily. So the library staff has just adapted really well to making sure that people can still access those, those materials. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Maria? Questions for our Town Manager? All right. And with that, I'm gonna sign off once again. I appreciate all that you folks did and continue to do. And please convey my thanks, not only as, as the, the, or the Chair of this, of this committee, but as a resident with kids in this community, how much we appreciate how hard everybody works when things get bad. And with that, I'll, I'll leave you in the capable hands of Maria, Eric and Chris. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Sean.
Right, good morning, everyone. Chris or Maria, do you want to take it?
I have my agenda handy, do others?
Yeah. If you have your agenda handy, go for it.
Okay, great, super. So next for our coronavirus and other updates is Mike with Emergency Management.
Okay, back to me again. I know you've heard a lot from me this morning already. Just a couple of updates going along with what has been said already. Maria alluded to the testing that's gonna be going on at the library with AFC. So emergency management is coordinating with them to get people tested when, if they wanna get tested. Then the Health District talked about the flu clinic that we're gonna be advertising and conducting down at the Wheaton Fire Station on October 7th. This has been a collaboration effort again between the Fire District, providing the site, the Police Department coming up with a traffic plan. And it looks like it's going to be, it's, it's looking, shaping up to be a very successful event and hopefully we can get as many people in there and vaccinated as possible. Hang on one second here, let me mute myself so we can hear the dispatch. Okay, sorry about that. All right, along with that, the region has scaled back its personal protective equipment that it is allotting to towns and to the long-term care facilities. The site that they've been distributing it in West Hartford is scaling back and will be shutting down soon. So we're, hopefully, we have a good supply of equipment should we have a second wave of COVID come through, which we're hoping it will not. Emergency management continues to put out an incident action plan for the town each week. And if there's any additions or any corrections on that, please let me know so we can keep the most current information going out to all sources on that. And then also for the last thing for emergency management is not only due to the storm we just had, but we are scheduling a normal review of the emergency operations plan for the town. If there's any additions or any corrections to that, please let me know. And we will be making some additions to it, such as the checklists, which I have been talking with the different departments about, so that we have a 48-hour, 36-hour, 24-hour and 12-hour timeframe checklist to make sure that everything is ready to go by the time the storm hits. And that's what I have for emergency management this month.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? All right, next is Chief Holder.
Yeah, good morning. So relative to COVID-19, membership is healthy. And we are continuing our modified medical response, which has been since March. So we are responding to true medical emergencies as we normally would. But the other non-emergencies or non-life-threatening calls, we are available if need be, but the ambulance service is taking the primary on that. Very few calls regarding sector rules, but one that I would like to make mention of that we have just sort of recently seen is large parties popping up. And this is occurring throughout the state. And it's organized through social media with just a pin drop. Somebody decides to say, we're having a party here, and they drop a pin on a, on a map. And kids and young adults show up from all over the state. So we had that unfortunate happening a couple of different times in the last week. Over the weekend, there was a large gathering at the intersection of West Street and Bushy Hill. And mostly young adults and teenagers of driving age all around the state show up. And we had one mother drop off, one location was at the Hot Meadow Country Club also in the, in the field, after hours unbeknownst to the club. And we had one mother drop off several young girls and ask the officer who was there trying to disperse things, if he was their chaperone them. So he let the parent know that this is happening throughout and to be cautious about things like this. So we, we tried to get a handle on that over the weekend by dispersing, and then we're just trying to make people aware that these things are happening. So, you know, parents ask for kids, where you're going, what the parties are, things, things like that. And just be aware of these large, potential large gatherings and make sure that you notify the police if you think anything is happening that should not be happening. And then unrelated to coronavirus, I don't know if anybody happened to catch the current this morning, but there was an article on stolen vehicles. We're continuing to see a rise in stolen vehicles in town, vehicles that are left unlocked, keys or key fobs left accessible. So right now, year-to-date, in calendar year 2020, we've had 20 vehicles stolen from town. The same time period last year, we had five, which was a little different for us. But then we quickly caught up and we ended up, last year, with a total of 20. So right now, we're at last year's total and with several more months to go and things seem to be picking up. I think that we need to continue to express to the public that we are all in this together, along with many other things that we do. And the simple step of locking your cars, not keeping valuables in your cars and not having your keys or your key fobs accessible is extremely important. We have for years now attended regional meetings on crime that's happening in the area, specifically some groups that, about this type of activity and stolen vehicles and what may or may not be working. There are task force throughout the region that are working on apprehending the people who are responsible for this, but it doesn't seem as if we're getting really any, anywhere with this. So again, we need some more participation from, from the public to prevent the, your car from being taken and your hassle going through that. Our officers are, are out there and being highly visible. These are occurring mostly on the overnight shift. So between 11:00 and roughly 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning, we have seen some as late as 4:00 and 5:00 in the morning. And we have seen some as early as 12:00 or 1:00 o'clock at night. On another note, working on the wildlife ordinance that, that was passed, we are still working on a video, releasing a video for the public on that. Our number of bear calls remains pretty much steady. And I think that's all, unless there are any questions.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's see, so Karen, again, unfortunately had a staffing conflict this morning, so we will skip on the ambulance this morning. Chief Baldass.
Yes, hi, good morning.
Morning.
Basically, we went through the storm response. So again, I just wanna thank all of the other agencies, especially Town Highway, Police, Ambulance for their help during that whole storm crisis that we went through. And thanks, Nick, for the, for the, for the kind words, Chief Holder, in regards to our volunteers. Yes, we were very fortunate. Our volunteer strength right now is, is, is excellent. We have over 90 members here in town. These are your, your neighbors who are helping to protect you in regards to fire and other emergencies. And they were out in force during that storm. And fortunately, I can report that we suffered absolutely no injuries, no issues, and, and that's always a good thing when everybody comes home safely. As far as the COVID goes, we're pretty much status quo, really no change. Everybody remains healthy, continuing the social distancing, mask wearing. And, but we're also able to continue to accelerate our training programs, working with the limited number of stations working together so we can continue to make sure our skills and training levels are, are maintained, which is really important. All of our personnel changes that we've kind of been anticipating and working through over the past number of months have been now completed at the Fire District level. As most people are aware, we have seen the retirement of Kevin Kowalski, our Fire Marshal, Emergency Management Director and Administrator for the district, and also Ron Castleitis, our Maintenance Engineer, both retired within the past month. Patrick Torville now is officially our Fire Marshal, taking Kevin's place in that role. Mike Berry, as you all know, as our Emergency Management Director. And I have assumed the Director of Administration position in addition to being the Volunteer Chief for the, for the Fire District and also oversee the facilities here. So all of those positions now are formally in place. The last thing that just wanted to give you a, a heads up on is as we've continued to see the increased activities going on with the Farmington River because of a lot of more recreational use, especially with COVID, people looking for things to do in small groups on their own, kayaking, canoeing, which is great to see. We've begun to, have begun to explore trying to come up with a, another alternative for a river access for emergency boat launch. And we are working right now with Yugo up at the Natchitochet Mountain, that development which is across the street from the Wheaton Firehouse, to possibly see if there may be an opportunity for us to have an emergency access launch for our boat, which would help us to get access to the southern part of, of the Farmington River, which is really important for us down there. So that's a work in progress. It's in the very early stages and we'll certainly be reporting on more of that as we go forward. That's all.
Great, thank you. All right, and next is Board of Education, Neil and Mark.
All right, I'm, I'm on a different phone today, just wanna make sure everybody can hear me.
I can hear you.
Okay, great. So we're gonna try to get school open, everybody. We're pretty excited after a hard, hard couple of months here in the summer that Monday we welcome back our teachers. The schedule for the school district has been changed so that there is a full week of professional development for teachers to prepare for opening, to, to ready themselves for greeting students back to a very different environment from a health and safety standpoint, but also from a social emotional standpoint after, you know, basically six months without being in school. So we will use all of next week with our teachers. The first day of a school will be a small one on Monday, August 31st, as we will only be doing orientations with our transition grades, meaning that we'll have invitations out to our kindergartens, kindergarteners and their families, and then orientations for 7th graders at Henry James and 9th graders at Simsbury High School. And the next day, Tuesday, September 1st, we begin our hybrid model. I'm sure you're all familiar with this from the news coverage in that it involves about 50% of the students in each school attending on, on a given day. So we now have established that, you know, essentially half the population will be assigned to Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and the other half of the population will be assigned for Thursdays and Fridays. And, and the goal of getting our youngest students back first, that hybrid model will only last a couple of weeks. And by September 14th, the plan calls for all K through 2 students to be back fully in school. And by September 29th, to have all elementary students, so also inviting back grades 3 through 6 by the end of September. The, the call on middle school and high school will come at that end of September, whether we can go, whether we can transition from hybrid to full. And if we do make a decision to bring back any more students, that would happen right after Columbus Day. So obviously, it goes without saying that there's been a tremendous amount of work on the public safety end of this in, in terms of our work with our custodians and our administrators in terms of the, the cleaning protocols and the safety protocols and the establishing social distancing. We're pretty pleased with what we've been able to do in the class, in the classrooms to establish social distancing. And, you know, working, the, what the principals are doing is working out all the details around, you know, more complex matters now like student drop-off and student pickup and lunch and recess and, and stuff like that. So we're, you know, excited to be able to get to this point. We do have a Board of Education meeting scheduled for tonight to discuss all of this with our board. It, it will be an in-person meeting, though it is not, uh, we are not able to open it to the public. So any, any public comment still has to be done through the, the email means. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there and see if anybody has questions. or that if Mark wants to weigh in on some of the things he's been working on.
Okay, thanks, Neil. Yeah, we're still, we're still working on times to be able to push that out for the police department, letting them know what the arrival times and some of the times are. I'll be working with Chief on that, getting with Mike Berry on emergency management. And again, Chief Bolter to go over some of the procedures that we're going to need to go through for our drills, fire drills and our crisis response drills. So we're still working on some of those. That's all I've got.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Hey, Maria?
Yes.
It's Chris. Hey, this is a question for, just, hey, hey, it's a quick question for, or comment for Neil. Hey, Neil, can't wait for next week, brother. Get these kids out of my, get these kids out of my house at least two days a week. Thank you, guys. Hey, just, I mean, it's sort of a blend of public safety or not, but I was going to shoot Matt a text. Tonight's meeting, maybe someone, I don't know who sure is, but maybe spend a little bit of time or additional, a few seconds of time explaining the, not, not justifying, but just highlighting and explaining the schedule that we've chosen, which is a bit different from other towns relative to the consecutive days in school versus the broken week with a Wednesday cleaning day. I'm getting, I'm getting a fair number of questions or pointed comments around that. So just make sure that, I think that would be of value because it is an issue of safety, conceivably. So just make sure that something I think is spent a little bit of time tonight and as much with the public audience, okay? That's just a comment for you guys.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. We'll be sure to address that. I appreciate that comment.
All right, any other questions for Mark or Neil?
Yeah, Maria, if I could just ask, I guess Neil or Mark, is there an anticipation that with the going back to school timeframe, that we should, I guess, prepare for an increase in personal vehicle drop offs of the students to the schools? In other words, are we anticipating a much heavier traffic? It's bad enough as it is sometimes now. But has there been any indication from families that there will be more parents driving their kids to school to keep them off the buses or any indication like that?
Yeah, certainly, yeah, part of our, we've asked parents if they can to drop off. I don't think you're going to see that immediately, Jim, because we're in the hybrid model. But I, and a big part of the hybrid model is to kind of transition this and get people used to routines. And the schools have been very thoughtful about their traffic patterns to try to anticipate what additional traffic might look like. But, you know, certainly, we recognize that it could definitely be challenging. The high school and middle school, which have always been the greatest challenges, are going to remain in hybrid till at least Columbus Day. So I think our early efforts will be monitoring what's happening at the elementary schools and especially a place like Squadron with, you know, the largest population. So it's, it's a point well taken and one that I know Mark, that's part of why Mark has been communicating with the police department around what patrol assistance we could have if things start to get complicated there.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
I'll be dropping my children off the night before, if that's okay.
All right, thank you. That's very helpful. Next is Tom Roy in Public Works.
Oh, good morning again, everybody. I guess just to echo one final time, just thanks to everybody on the, on the team that was involved in the storm cleanup. And I just think, again, our crews all have worked together so well during these events. And not everybody gets to get out and actually see it, which thankfully, they're in and safe. But it's a lot of work done by a lot of people, not necessarily looking for the credit, just trying to do the right thing. We also, similar to the chief, are happy to report right now, all of our staff are healthy. We do not have any Corona issues right now. We're still continuing to do our best in terms of providing social distance and working outside when we can. I think it's just a matter of continuing to push that message, especially as we come into the fall and we might have more inside work. We did submit a preliminary cost for the storm to FEMA. That was through Amy Meriwether in our finance department. But just in terms of order of magnitude scale, this was nowhere close to the 2011 event. But just our initial first week, when we value both our overtime and the equipment that we use, we're just around $100,000 just for Public Works alone. Don't know if the state is going to hit the thresholds necessary to actually see a reimbursement, but we're going through all of the processes to give ourselves the best chance possible to see some recoup on that, on those funds. And one final note, we are going to be beginning to lay out and install in the next two weeks a traffic calming, a temporary traffic calming measures at the intersection of Notch and West Mountain Road. This is just going to be a temporary reconfiguration of that roadway intersection with the intent of trying to slow traffic coming from West Mount in traveling south onto Notch Road, where we've gotten a number of complaints about the speed of traffic through that neighborhood, combined with the volume and working through our local traffic authority group, felt this was a good demonstration project. Everything is going to be temporary, everything is going to be breakaway. So in the event, Chief Baldess, that we had a fire and fire apparatus had any trouble navigating it, it would be just either rumble strips or the plastic delineators that would, again, they would not slow down or inhibit a fire truck. But that's what I have, if you have any questions.
All right, thanks, Tom. Next is Social Services. Kristen is on vacation, but she did provide me with a brief update that I will share. We are continuing to see an increase in the number of households experiencing food insecurity. We really saw that start at the beginning of the pandemic and it has continued. We are now surveying upwards of 170 households total with each and every food distribution. And that's a combination of folks coming to our food distribution in person as well as some homebound individuals that we, through the use of volunteers, are providing food to. Pre-COVID, we would typically serve about 80 households per month. So now it's almost double of what we were serving. We definitely also saw an uptick following school being out for the summer. So folks may not know this, but we are able to do our food programs through donations. And we actually rely on donations to run that particular program. The amount of financial donations, as well as donations of non-perishable food items, toiletries, household cleaning products and gift cards has flowed fairly considerably over the last few weeks. So it's a bit of a plea to folks who are looking for ways to help other community members in need. This is a way that has just an amazing direct impact for families and individuals right here in our town. So if people are interested in donating any of those items, they can contact our social services department. We also have a drop, kind of like a drop cart in front of, you know, and the social services staff can come on out and take, take those donations and bring them into the building. The senior center staff is continuing to help coordinate the hand-stone masks that we have received from generous, generous volunteers in the community. Today, we've received 3,500 masks that people have sewn in the community. I think that's really remarkable. And we've been able to distribute over 2,200 back out to the community. So really want to thank them for doing that. And lastly, for many of our residents who have participated in social services and senior center programs over the years, I'm sure many of you are familiar with our assistant, Charlotte Barth. She is actually retiring in about two weeks after 30 years of service. That is just a pretty, again, remarkable amount of time to devote to our community. So we really want to wish Charlotte well in her retirement. And we're excited to announce that Dana Olson, who has been working at our senior center now for a few years, will be promoted and replacing Charlotte in that capacity as the assistant for the overall department. So again, well wishes to Charlotte and congratulations to Dana. Any questions on social services? All right, so our BNA updates and Main Street updates, we will skip this week. Both Nancy and Sarah unfortunately had conflicts. Do folks have anything else that they would like to add? All right, so a reminder for our next meeting, it is in September. Sorry, I'm just pulling that up on my calendar. I'll give you the specific date. Our next meeting is September 17th. That was actually prior to the pandemic, one of our regularly scheduled quarterly meetings. However, we've gotten, I think, into the habit of this group meeting at 8:00 AM. So you may recall that for that September meeting, we will not be meeting at 7:00 AM. I repeat, not meeting at 7:00 AM. And we will be meeting at 8:00 AM that Thursday morning. So we'll see everybody in about a month. And thank you for coming today. All right. You're welcome.
Thank you.